So this is the digital equity working group. Today is August 12th and it's a little past 12 o'clock. So we'll kick this, kick this meeting started. So thank you everybody for, for getting on. I know it's been a little while. We've had a lot of stuff happening. Over the last several months, a lot of work being done and I wanted to make sure that we updated everybody on all the things that have been done over the last several months. A lot of efforts that we've done around grants and obviously the final report that was submitted. So I'm gonna let Eric kick it off to just talk about the final report piece and some of the things that we had. Worked on over the last several months on that piece.
Perfect. And on top of everything else, this is my second meeting today with Tracy. Must be a good day.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't even see Counselor Vice President Whitfield on there. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric, we will connect next week because I know you've been trying and I've been just busy. I'm sorry, Eric.
That's all right. That's all right. You're allowed to be busy.
Okay.
All right. So yes, the report which you know, has its own heft was submitted. And then there were some things they needed more information on. And then there was the implementation piece. And Sequoia has been fantastic working with us. He's done some really good work and we really appreciate having him there. And then there is certain recommendations that were made with price tags attached to them. And there's, we can, I can, I can share that information verbally or I can try to pull it up as a sheet. Let me see if I can share it. Not that one, not that one. I pulled it up just before we got on to make sure I could do it. And of course. I have one. Oh, here it is. Can everybody see that?
It's there.
Yes.
All right. So this is the summary of costs and cost, recommendations and cost estimates. It is not meant to be definitive, like it be all to end all. It is what we submitted to. Mass Broadband Institute so that they could have something to go by and we have more detailed breakdown of this as well. But in terms of the discussions that were had, especially towards the end about how the money should be prioritized. We shifted quite a bit from the original proposal to this based on what, not quite a bit, but we did some tweaking of this to make it all work. The way the city wanted it to work and that's where we worked with Sequoia. So starting at the top, yes, the city is already has a permanent digital equity working group. Part two, we understood at the meeting that we were at from Tim Sheehan and others that the city has already. Supported tech foundry and wave finders to a significant extent. So we did not put any money towards that explicitly, but we know that that's a relationship that's going on and we wanted to highlight that for MBI through this. There was big, some considerable talk about how much we could expand the hotspot program. So significant resources were put there. Knowing that there would be significant cooperation between the city, the library, the council on aging and others. That it wasn't just going to be one person that had all these devices. I'll just rip through this and then we can talk. There's the work that Counselor Delgado has been looking at in terms of trying to see what would happen in the world of the fiber. That is down in the city and, and the competition that's going on between various entities within the city. And that there needs to be some look at this from a top down. So we put a little bit of money there. So we can help the counselor. If the city wants to reprioritize that money, that's fine. The big two chunks of money that were here is the Wi-Fi on public buildings and spaces such as parks. And other places and that seemed to be something that was, that people were interested and we had some discussions at that past meeting about that. And then the second one was for. For two years running to have some money available for the library and council on aging for the digital training efforts. So that this is money that can come into their budget and go out and help pay for that as they do it. However, those things are organized. And so the intent there was maybe that could be broken over two years. Eighteen thousand each year and we, again, we have no jurisdiction on the money. The city can decide to do it however it wants. So that is a summary. That comes up to ninety nine thousand nine hundred eighty six. There's a potential of up to a hundred thousand coming back from the MBI on this. So we came as close as we could. I drafted and redrafted this, had some discussions with Sequoia. To make sure that we were in the right boundaries. We both checked our notes from the past meetings to make sure that we were in the right areas. And this is what we wound up submitting. And I want to say again that this is a priority list and if we, if we shift priorities, all we need to do is provide an explanation. For how that priority is shifting. It's not as if this is an ironclad budget at the way it stands now. So it was our, it was really interesting to work and get the feedback that we did. We feel like we're in a good place with both MBI and the city in terms of all, all the pieces that have gone on. We aren't going anywhere in terms of hanging around. We've got a little bit more money for the rest of the month and maybe some money after that. So we can keep helping the counselor, et cetera, not to the extent we were, but at least providing advice and technical assistance as needed. So. That's where we think stand up today. I, I have submitted back information to MBI at their request. There were a whole bunch of, there were a number of questions they had that Sequoia and I put in our. Heads together and got an answer back to them. So I think we're in a good place. What I was gonna do at this point is toss it to Sequoia to make sure that. He's cool with where we're at. And so you can all hear him speak to it as well, but I'm feeling good about what we've done to this point.
Eric, before, before Sequoia jumps in there, I just want to reiterate. So. You know, some of the things that, that Eric was talking about were several meetings after we met with the working group. We had to meet with the city. We had multiple meetings with some with the mayor and some with department heads. Working on this final report and kind of, you know, Eric and team highlighting all the different initiatives that. The working group has highlighted in terms of the needs and then getting the, the city's feedback on things that the city is able to do. Moving forward. And so they gave us their feedback and it's kind of culminated with what, you know, Eric has highlighted here. And what eventually was submitted to MBI as part of that hundred thousand dollar implementation grant. So I just wanted to reiterate that piece. And then I'll, I'll kick it over to Sequoia, but I just want to reiterate. The, you know, having Sequoia on, I know one of the things that this working group talked about when I got on as a chair. Was, you know, this was all volunteer board. Guys have done a lot of work from the beginning. To get us to even the point that we're at now. But one of the things that was highlighted was the fact that it is all volunteer and we had really nobody. From the city side, really helping on in terms of guiding us through this process. And so. When I requested to Kathy Bono, I said, we need somebody to, to help us, somebody that knows this, this grant world. She gave us Sequoia and Sequoia has been phenomenal in helping to guide us through these grant process over the last. You know, year and some change, but over specifically the last several months. And so I wanted to make sure that Sequoia could come on. Kind of curtail off of what Eric was talking about, but then talk about some of the other work. That, that they've been working on in terms of, you know, specifically the digital equity. There are a few questions. I've actually, let me pause real quick. I did see. Counselor Whitfield had a question. Is there staff cost affiliated with this proposal?
No, there isn't on this one. So yeah, so I can just sort of go a little bit more in depth with that. So.
Perfect.
No city staff associated with this grant. There was however, the potential of a position on what was called the Launchpad Grant. That we all worked collaboratively on a few months ago, back in April, I want to say. Myself, Eric, the counselor, also Michael and the rest of the team at PBC came up with a elaborate plan. A concept paper for the Launchpad Grant, which ultimately got cut by the president. Which was unfortunate because I thought it was very advantageous for us in the city. And we thought that a position would make more sense on a grant that's more than a year, you know, so that it can be more sustainable. One year, you know, you really can't do much and we'd hate to bring someone on to just potentially let them go a year later. So. After meeting with the city, so after that was cut, sorry, we moved on to the implementation grant. This, that's this budget here. And we felt that these items here were the most. I guess ready to mobilize products. Again, this is only a year grant as well. So. We can sort of hit the ground running with a lot of these areas. And I think that this is going to be a good, good grant here for the city.
Do you want me to take that down so we can all see each other?
Yeah, that works. The which piece?
The spreadsheet, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And Sequoia, if you could a little bit like, so I know you quickly covered the Launchpad. But there was a lot of time and effort spent by Sequoia, Eric. I know I jumped on a number of calls. To try to get that. So I want to make sure that we reiterate, there was a lot of work done there. And we were literally ready. I mean, we talked with outside stakeholders, different organizations that are already doing this type of work in the community. And you know, there was a lot there to, at the, you know, 11th hour for it to, you know, get cut by the federal government. I just want to make sure that I highlight a lot of that work that, that was done there because, you know, it was a significant amount of time. And energy invested. And one of the things we really tried to do with that Launchpad was really. One of the things that I really wanted to see was there's a lot of organizations that are doing work in silos. And what we really wanted to make sure was that we connected who's doing what. And what are the areas and gaps within the city that are not being covered? And that was, you know, again, significant time. And so Sequoia, Eric and everybody else who was part of that process. I just want to say thank you. You know, for the work that was put into that and the kind of creativeness and the kind of making sure that we made the city whole. Because obviously again, got cut, but just want to make sure that, that they didn't go without saying that there was significant work done there.
And I just wanted to add a little bit to that if I could, which is that. Yeah, that was an excellent process and I thought we all communicated well. And it was also something where we talked to MBI regularly about it. So they were aware. And it felt like it had good bones in terms of being able to be moved ahead. If MBI ever gets money back and they can put money back towards municipal programs, I would definitely use that as a framework. If, you know, if we could, because I thought that was really well balanced. As you said, breaking down some of the silos, putting people together that need to be together to get things done. And communicating on a citywide basis.
All right. So we got some, some questions popping up. So I want to make sure we can get to a couple and then keep going. So. Roberta, I don't know. I'm reminded, has there been anybody named to a permanent group? So no, not as of yet. There hasn't been anybody named. Again, the, the list that, that we have for the final report was the suggestions to the city. So there hasn't been any, any permanent stuff done as of yet. I think the focus was on one, getting the report in. And then getting some of these grant opportunities. Established and submitted. So that's kind of been the focus as of right now. And then to the other question around. Does MBA now see Springfield as having broadband citywide? I'm not sure what MBI sees us. I think, you know, they have our final report and from what I understand, Eric and Sequoia can. Can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, they, they see that as the plan that we're going to move forward to trying to, you know, work on digital equity in general. Another topic that I've been running on, which, you know, really didn't put it on the agenda for today, but I can talk a little bit about it later on, is more on the fiber. Area and I can talk a little bit more about that later on. So.
Right. That was. Really my question was connected to the infrastructure, the cyber stuff. Because MBI, they sent out an email a couple of weeks ago. Where the focus was on what still needed to be done in terms of broadband. And I got the impression in reading it that they thought that Springfield now had broadband. Throughout the city because of the grant given to Verizon, that they saw that as filling in whatever was absent. Previously. And so it gave the impression, at least to me, that that was not a category that we, that Springfield. Would be considered under. The need for the, for broadband.
No, that's a great question. And Eric, I don't know if you have more information. I know I had reached out before around the Verizon piece and the. What they got specifically. And it seemed like they were dividing that up amongst a number of different communities, but can you speak a little bit more on that one? Cause we talked about that one before.
Without looking like I'm deferring, I'm going to defer to Michael because he's got this one better than anybody.
So what Robert is talking about is the, the bead money. It's broadband. Equity access and deployment money. And so that was. If I can remember correctly, like a hundred and forty four million, it was a lot of money. And the Biden administration prioritize fiber as the technology. So. Each state got a chunk of change based on what the feds thought, based on the FCC math, how much connectivity was missing in the state to sort of fill in the gaps. So Massachusetts, you know, officially we have ninety six percent coverage in all communities across the Commonwealth. It's debatable on the ground, but that's the official number. And so we got a number that's corresponding to that. So probably like two months ago, I think the Trump administration put the brakes on that money. They didn't, they didn't claw it back, but they basically retooled their guidelines so that fiber wasn't the preferred. Method. So you could have Starlink, for example, and you could apply and get bead money. So all the states were required to redo their guidelines. I think MBI had to do it. End of July, early August or something like that. So that's sort of the big umbrella within that. In terms of how the Verizon thing shows up is that there was a couple before the, the brakes got put on. And everything was operating under the Biden administration guidelines. There were, I think, three cycles of awards for bead money and the money went to ISPs only. So you had to be an internet service provider saying that you could. Serve an entire community. And so to Robert's point, conceptually, what basically MBI was thinking is that. And what I've been told by Josh Iken is that if an ISP got awarded a community that had gaps in it. They were responsible for filling in all the gaps in that community. And then, you know. I would assume that there's a lot of politics and jockeying in terms of like them not wanting to expend money on gaps that maybe are not official. Communities want to say, but we actually have real people who don't have this coverage and you got the money. So you gotta do it. I don't think that's played out. I think it's relatively new. What I don't know is with, with the halt and the sort of the change, what that means for ISP deployment, like in terms of Verizon. Do they, are they now required to do fiber like they originally awarded or do they have more flexibility? That's something I, I'm not sure. The other thing I'll just say, well, I got the border relation to bead contextually. The way the Biden administration set it up is that. The priority for bead money was infrastructure. So actually connecting people with, you know, hardwired stuff. Depending upon how a state was effective in that, there might be money left over and that was considered non-deployment money. Non-deployment money could then be used for the soft stuff, you know, so hotspots, digital skills, et cetera, et cetera. MBI was already assuming originally that they would have a whole bunch of non-deployment money. And that they could sort of use it. So if you think about the ARPA funds. MBI used a lot of the ARPA funds to build out connectivity with the idea of saving the non-deployment funds and having a bigger pot. Last I heard, which is a few weeks ago, MBI hasn't, hasn't heard what the rules of the road are in terms of the non-deployment money. If they can spend it, how they can spend it. So it's sort of floating out there as a question, but I'd say the only. Easy bright spot maybe in terms of the Launchpad is that, you know, if Massachusetts. Got to go ahead to use non-deployment money. Maybe MBI could revive Launchpad using that pot as opposed to the pot that got clawed back. So.
That's why I said what I said. I've heard that rumor as well, but nobody, nothing is official.
No.
Got it. And I'll, I'll speak to more on the fiber conversation that this is all connected. But I want to make sure we get some of the, the report stuff and the grant stuff out of it. And then we can talk a little bit more about that on the, on the backend. So Charlie's had his hand up patiently. So. You're on mute, Charlie.
Mute again.
Yeah, he's muted again. Hold on. Yeah. Now you're on, now you're not muted.
Didn't become off of mute.
There you go. He got you.
Two things. One came from. One, one came from Professor Rutterman. And the art department STCC. And that was when we did a lot of work on something and it all got lost. He would say, well. You can do it a second time, a whole lot faster. So all the work we did is good. We can do it again. We know, we know what to do now. The other thing is it comes from the town I grew up in. And the small towns around there in Southern Berkshire County. And people come up from New York City and, and yes, they have cell phones and they have internet, but the rest of us. In some cases, we're dealing with dial-up to be able to have any internet. Because DSL was just not there, even though Verizon says yes, but it's not really. There. So what I'm saying is. I think things get skewed depending upon who answers the questionnaire. And if, if, I'm, I'm with you guys with a hotspot from the library. Because the hotspot I had from Verizon died. Because Trump pulled the money away. It was given to me as a year's worth and I got six months. So I mean, all I'm saying is that some. We have huge gaps, but it all depends on who answers the questionnaire as to whether or not somebody thinks there's gaps. And quite often the regular local folks that live there never get to see the questionnaire.
Mike, Michael and Eric, I mean, do we have any information to Charlie's point in terms of the dial-up piece of it? Because I mean, we're talking about, you know, one thing we're talking about broadband, then we're talking about the new fiber stuff. But you know, the dial-up piece for folks like Charlie, you know, do we, we have as much information there?
I, in for Springfield?
Yeah, for Springfield in general.
I have not heard of any dial-up remaining in Springfield. I have heard it remaining in, you know, remote, small rural towns and things like that, but I've not heard it in Springfield.
So we should probably work with Charlie on that piece to, to continue to learn more. Cause that's, that's a first for me in terms of. Understanding that people are still using dial-up in Springfield, unless you're saying that's in the Berkshires, Charlie. I don't know if I. Misheard you.
I am saying both, mainly in the Berkshires, but I'm also noting that AOL has, is canceling their dial-up aspect. So those people that only could deal with dial-up, they've lost that now.
Yeah, I did read that article about AOL.
The only people that were still doing it.
Yep, you're right.
I don't think dial-up is an issue. In Springfield and probably hardly at all in Western Mass anymore. So like in. Shoots where I, Verizon started disinvesting in their copper network, probably about ten, twelve years ago. And you know, dial-up is based on actual, you know, copper phone lines. So Verizon doesn't maintain them. And what ended up happening, I'll just tell you in my town is that if someone moved. Out of their house, whether they were moving or it's a rental situation, Verizon would not connect the new party, even if it was moving into the same house with, you know, the same location. So Verizon as the phone provider primarily is the one that would be offering the dial-up. I think they're. You know, they got out of that game. They don't want to, they don't want to hassle with copper. They make their money on, you know, fiber and. So I think Comcast stepped in with, you know, as the, the low tech solution with cable. And we've all discussed the inadequacy of cable in some neighborhoods.
Definitely. All right. I do want to talk about some of the fiber stuff that has been going on. So I don't know if many of you guys have seen, but. I have been pushing, well, originally I really would have loved to see the city go after a municipal fiber network. There had been some plans in the past to, to look at that, study it. And there was obviously a huge dollar amount on top of a lot of. Work that need to be done to create a municipal light plant. So recently the council and I appreciate Vice President Whitfield being here is we've had some initiatives come before us. From GoNetSpeed, who is a private internet service provider who is looking to install fiber in the city, which I think is, is a great thing overall. You're, you're seeing fiber in a lot of other communities, you know, people have been talking about this for, for years and years and. So it's, it's good news that companies are looking to Springfield to do this. My one issue I had is that I, as I've been kind of learning more about fiber and fiber companies and how they're building out is. That, you know, these companies can come in essentially, they, you know, they're, they're business. They're here to make money. So they can study a market. They can pick an area that they want to build out, which is usually an area where that has a higher median income that can, you know. Can sign up and get subscriptions. And what can happen is, you know, once those kind of higher median income level areas are, are, are built out. There's really no incentive for them to go to other areas that are quote unquote lower, you know. Lower median incomes. And so one of the things that I was seeing and talking with other communities is that, that can happen, right? So a provider can come in, they can build out and then they can stop. And then what happens is any other provider that may have thought about coming to a city. Is not, would more than likely not come in because they need those higher median income neighborhoods. They need that, that income coming in so that they can then invest in kind of the areas that, that really need that, that type of service. And so. You know, in conversations with folks here and conversations with city folks. You know, that gave me cause for concern because we're talking about digital equity. We're talking about all this work we're trying to do around accessibility, affordability, education. And there's this newer, I don't want to say newer, but for us newer infrastructure coming in that's supposed to be faster. They're supposed to offer, you know. You know, lower bills and give competition to, to, you know, folks like Comcast. My concern was that, you know, it would exacerbate the equity in terms of accessibility. And so. We've been demanding more kind of information from GoNetSpeed. And we, we had one subcommittee meeting where they kind of gave just a high level of what they're doing, but. There's supposed to be another subcommittee meeting coming on at some point, either at the end of the month or early September where we, we talk more. Cause I've been pushing. GoNetSpeed. You know. Essentially, I want to see a commitment to build out the whole city as, you know, and I don't think we should be approving, you know, I was looking, I don't want to be approving things and. In short term, that creates long-term equity challenges. And so the, the council and they got support from. Vice President Whitfield as well to, to learn more about what they're doing and how. What their kind of long-term efforts are for the city of Springfield, not just. Areas in the middle of the city, but other areas that need this, this type of infrastructure, which could really change. A neighborhood for, for, for their future, right? It could really impact in terms of, you know, having that fiber. Other businesses being able to open up and have quicker, faster, cheaper internet. So there's a lot of conversations going around there and GoNetSpeed has been reaching out. And so there will be a, a meeting on the maintenance development at some point. We haven't got a, a date yet where they're going to come. Attached to that, you know, as I was learning more about this, I had, you know, asked the city that, you know, we should definitely look into an RFP process. Is one of the things I've been advocating for saying, well, if we have companies like GoNetSpeed coming in, but they haven't yet, you know, really. There's no, nothing. But they haven't yet, you know, really, there's no, nothing man- mandating them to do the whole city. We should try to see if there are other companies that are looking at the city and say, hey, we should do some type of RP process, some type of competition. Similar to what we, we did with when the casinos came. And and making these companies fight over, you know, building out the city of Springfield. And that was something that, that I had been advocating, pushing on the side. Uh, parallel to this. So um, so, so I wanted to make sure that folks knew uh um. For me, what was some of those discussions and things that are happening. And that's kind of where I'm at. And and I've had, you know, support from the council in terms of just kind of learning more, but. I'd love to give uh Vice President Whitfield an opportunity to speak to as she, you know, she kind of expressed. An interest in, in learning more and and making sure that this, we get this for the entire city as well.
Thank you, Counselor Delgado, for the opportunity. I just want to say first, thank you all for all the hard work um that you're putting into. Making sure the city of Springfield has visual equity. Um, because we don't. There's a gap, but this is great work and great work on um writing. Did we write the grant yet? Or uh writing the grant, um, great work. Um, but as far as GoNetSpeed, I was a little concerned too, because when I asked the questions. On what part of the community you're starting in. Now, I live in Liberty Heights, Springfield, and our internet is terrible. I, I'm always getting disconnected. I'm always struggling. And when they said they were starting in. The East Forest Park area, um, I don't know if they struggle over there or not, but. I'm just like, the people that probably can't afford high-end internet speeds are the ones that are being left out. In this moment, and then I didn't also didn't know um that. How, Counselor Delgado informed me on is if they start building um their fiber network, other markets can't come in or won't come in. To like finish up the city. And if they decide to pull out, then we're stuck. Like, we got. The most affluent part of the Springfield community with great um digital access. And um the under-resourced communities with less. And I don't know, it just, I don't know what the cost is um for the internet. It was just a lot of unanswered questions um that we had. And so I think the RP process would be the way to go. Um, I agree with Counselor Delgado because it will bring in more. Um, more opportunities from different fiber companies. But we have the right in there that they're going to do the whole city. You can't do a portion and not agree. To do our whole city. And I also think that. Um, they need some cost-effective services, you know, some discounts to those who can't afford it. Like, all these things were not discussed and we were supposed to just agree to this. So. I'm glad that Counselor Delgado brought it up in this committee. And I hope um when the RP process come out that you all, because of your knowledge with the digital equity, would be. Involved on what we're looking for for the city, because I don't really have a clue. I come to these meetings to learn, but you all are doing the work. Um, I, I do my research as best as I can, but you all are really like putting in the work, really thinking about it. I love seeing Gene here. I love seeing Mr. Stephen here. And I love seeing Charlie. I love seeing all you here, really. But those are the ones that I work with often. On um digital equity are here from the most and that's doing the work and argue as well. So I hope that when, if the RP process does come up, that you all are on that process. To give your input and insight because you're most closely are related to it. So that's what I wanted to say. Um. And Roberta also, like, I don't know everybody's work, but I know all of you are doing it. So thank you so much. I don't want to leave anybody else. I don't want to leave any of you out. Um.
Thank you, thank you.
Keisha? Is that?
Keisha.
Keisha, hi, Keisha. Um, Michael, all of you. Um, so thank you for um doing this work because it's not popular or fancy, but it's definitely needed. So thank you for even doing the research um behind it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Whitfield. And uh, I echo your sentiments. Um, you know, I am still learning stuff. I am. By far don't know that much, but I've been uh that much smarter because of the folks on this group who, who have been dedicating, you know, years to this process. And so. And I do want to make sure um that, you know, Sequoia and the team, they applied for uh, they were applying for multiple grants. Um, you know, as we mentioned earlier, uh, one of them got pulled out. Um, and so, so there's been a lot of work, but. Everybody on this committee has done a lot of work just to get us to this point. And so. So I really appreciate that. But in terms of the fiber stuff, yeah, I, I think I, I'm with you on that. So I've been pushing the city. Uh, this RFP process, um, if we're not going to do our own municipal. Fiber network, um, which, you know, there, there's a big price tag to that, but that was also one of the things I mentioned before. Was, well, we bond all the time for um, you know, items and uh. Things for the city that don't make us any money, right? But, you know, here's an area where if you did, if you did do the municipal side, you know. You could make money. You could actually lease out the space, but I would, you know, I got a lot of resistance on that end. So then, you know, the other idea was this RP process. Um, to make sure that the city, the full city gets looked at and not just. A, a few neighborhoods and then leaves the rest out. So, so I pre- thank you for, for your support on that. Are there any other questions?
I think three of us have a hand up, so.
Okay, it's not showing me for whatever reason.
Yes, Michael, then Stephen, and then me.
Yes, I, I, I think Stephen had his hand up a while, I think, before. So I'm going to give it to Mr. Howard first, and then we'll go to Michael and then Eric. Stephen.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that.
No worries.
Just switch my screen. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for the hard work, the dedication shown by, by this uh working group. Uh, I don't want to start calling names because I don't want to leave anybody out. But the chair will tell you, I've been a stickler with him on this. And I think sometimes when he sees me, he tries to run, run away. But uh. What I understood, and I joined the meeting late, is that uh Trump. Basically pulled some funding. I don't know how much of it. That was earmarked or, and. He seems to want to send it over to Elon Musk. Who he's been ha- in, in battle with. So if the person that Starlink, if he wants to turn it over. To, to Starlink. And the person who's running Starlink, they're having some discrepancies. How reliable could that service be? If it's decided that Starlink will provide a service? And how affordable would it be? And how could that like benefit the entire city? Not just the neighborhoods, as has been mentioned. And what I'd also like to find out is, are there any future plans to meet? With, let's say, uh Verizon, MBI, or anyone. Or any other entities who are willing to provide services? And would that, would that be separate meetings? Or would it be? Would they be invited to, say, present their best offers to the committee as a whole? As opposed to having separate meetings whereby they don't have the, the luxury of uh being competed against? Thank you, Mr.
Uh, thank you, thank you, uh, Stephen. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I, since I put out the RFP press uh process, press release where I was advocating for that. I, I had a number of, of companies reach out and express their interest on the fiber side. Uh, with the city. And, you know, I, I mentioned that to the folks at the city um who are making decisions. Um, and I even. Was planning to have some type of meeting where we can just get some information. Um, waiting to hear back from some of those companies. I've already heard from one or two who would be willing to just talk about. That in general. I think there was another company that was a little hesitant um to put a lot of stuff out there. Um, they would rather leave something like that for an RFP process versus competing each other over a meeting. But there have been some talks about that and um, and reaching out to folks like Verizon as well to kind of get some updates. So I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. So. That is something that I, I'm definitely looking into. Uh, I just want to get confirmation from some of these companies. So I didn't want to jump the gun until I got. Confirmation from folks that could attend.
And what about the part about Starlink? Uh, uh, does anybody have any idea how that would work?
I don't, I don't want to, I, I mean, that's a federal, that's on the federal side. Um, so I don't know unless uh, you know. Michael, Eric, or anybody else has any information on that. All I know from our end is we were working hard on the. The Launchpad Grant and uh had a, had something ready to go, worked it out with a bunch of different uh community organizations that we were going to try to like. Work collaboratively and that got pulled. Um, and so I don't know anything else on the Starlink piece. I don't want to, I don't want to kind of assume, you know, I, I did read some stuff about Starlink, but I, I don't know what the federal government is doing at that point. I think we're still trying to figure out, we're still learning all the time in terms of the grants world, not just from the digital side, but from all the grants. And as you know, the city of Springfield. Relies on a lot of grants. And so there's a lot of folks, you know, just trying to stay updated day by day because things change all the time at the federal level in terms of grants.
I, I did make a point in the chat that um may address Mr. Howard's uh concern. About any certain uh companies responding to RFP. You have to build into the RFP things that you want bidders to address and. If they can't address it in their response, then. So perhaps you, you would not go with them. That, that's just uh. I don't know what that, if that would affect the, that specific company. In general. Sorry to jump the line.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, sat- I mean, satellite technology is less consistent. And more expensive. So, you know, if you wove that into a, an RFP, um. You know, historically satellites, if it's cloudy, you don't get a very good reception. Um, and it's definitely more expensive. So part of the push is in, you know, really remote rural places where you can't build fiber, but. Springfield obviously is not that. I would say Massachusetts is not that even. Um.
For sure.
Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to put out there is that um. Um, we're here to help you with that RFP idea, counselor, and that um. It's something that we do regularly, so happy to work with you and Sequoia to, to help push something forward.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I guess that I've had meetings with folks from the city. I'm going to try to keep pushing it. Uh. There's some, some other things we have to look at.
Yep.
Before we get there um from a legal perspective, but that's definitely something that, that I've been pushing for. Um. You know, I, again, at the end of the day, for me, it's about making sure that, you know, whether it's a commitment or. I want to make sure that no neighborhoods are left behind. That's my focus, right? And with that, we don't exacerbate the, you know, this equity work. That we've been working on, that you guys have been working on a lot longer than I have. Um, is making sure that, that, you know, because again, this type of investment infrastructure in some of our neighborhoods could really change. Long-term, you know, potential of, of some of our neighborhoods that are struggling, right? And this could really be something so to, to make sure that, that all of the city gets looked at, especially those neighborhoods who have historically been. Um, have had less. Um, I want to make sure that, that that's a focus, at least for me, so. All right. I don't know, Eric and Michael, you still have your hands up? I don't know.
Oh, no, mine's coming down.
I'm, I was going to add something. So I, I, I thought of this just as, you know, both. Looks like we lost the. The vice, the vice chair for the council. But when we were having the RFP conversation, I'd thought about this. So. In my private life, I'm on the planning board for Shutsbury. Um, and we just had a meeting yesterday about data centers. Um, and I think it might, it'd be worth researching this as another opportunity for sit- the city to have leverage. So with the growth of AI comes the need for these mega in uh. Installations, installations for computer networking and information management and things like that. And so. There's a huge national push now, you know, the Amazons and the Googles, everyone's trying to build AI and going to places. You know, for a small place like Shutsbury where I am, it's, it's largely problematic because they tend to be big, they suck up energy, they use water. Um, so the citing and permitting is really, you know, important. And I think there's an environmental justice component where, you know, usually put industrial things in poor communities and. That's exploitative. But. What's be interesting, and I think from a city council perspective, is. There, there's companies looking to cite data centers everywhere because the exponential growth of AI. They're by definition needing high-speed internet connections because that's all they do. Um, and they need zoning approval. So I think it's true, and, and they're making tons of money. I can send you some articles. You know, because I did some research for our planning board. I could just send you two uh, two documents, but. For town, for municipalities who are saying yes to this, there's a lot of money to be had. And so I think there, the two ways to maybe leverage this and connect the dots, one is. If the city on the front end says, if we let in data centers, we're going to generate money around internet connectivity. Can we use that to build out or support fiber throughout the city? So I think that's like one way to do it. The other way might be just to sort of leverage, and I don't know how, if, you know, how allowable this is, but to sort of look at. Marrying the zoning permitting component and the conditioning on, you know, from a community benefits sort of mindset. How you would allow zoning permitting for a data center that's about internet connectivity to build out. And, you know, the entire city. So it's totally new on my horizon, but I wanted to share it because I think there's. Both from the substantive perspective that it's internet data distribution oriented and the fact that there's money. If cited and permitted correctly and responsibly, it could actually be helpful.
I appreciate that. I, I've read a lot about, uh, I think in Westfield, is it that? There's some huge uh data center that, that's been proposed. So uh, so not, I, I haven't thought about it from that perspective and. I'd be curious to know where even in, you know, how that would impact the city of Springfield if we even went down that, that line.
Just as a quick aside, the single largest driver of building new energy production facilities. Is the AI component that say the, the centers, because they need so much electricity to do what they do.
It's good to know. Uh, I think I saw Roberta's hand go up.
Put it in the chat also. I really wanted, you know, we need to. Carefully listen to what Michael is saying. Because especially poor communities tend to be targeted for these um. For environmental racism programs like what Musk is doing in Memphis now. Um, which is, you know, really draining. The water, the electricity, et cetera. That people need in order to feed into, to the data center that he's developing there. And a lot of the data center plans are, are very similar. You know, they'll go to a poor community, they'll claim they're built, they're building something that's going to provide jobs. For the community when in fact it doesn't provide jobs and it. It just devastates communities. So we need to be really careful because Springfield is already. Suffering from impoverishment and is in need of, of job development and so forth. But we have to be careful not to be fooled um by these data center proponents.
Yep, appreciate that. Thank you. I think I see uh Mr. Howard, Stephen.
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is a question I, it, it, it shows my ignorance. But when the, when the proposal was presented. Was it done as a mun- municipality? Or under what? You know? How, how was it presented? Because I know uh net-for-profits, for example, qualify and there are other entities that qualify. But the main thing that they were trying to do was mu- municipalities. So I just wanted to find out. Was that presented as, as coming from a mu- municipality? Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I don't know if I, if I'm missing it. What are you, what proposal were you talking about? Are you talking about the report? Are you talking about the fiber stuff we're talking about? Are you talking about the report? Are you talking about the fiber stuff we're talking about?
The, 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 the fiber stuff, because the report basically was just to say, okay, this is what we've done. But I, I think, uh, Brother Sequoia submitted a proposal. So I'm trying to figure out how was that, who was that coming from?
Okay, the Launchpad proposal would have been from the city of Springfield.
So that's, so if it's come from the city of Springfield, so then it wasn't presented as coming from a mu- municipality.
It wasn't presented as coming from Pioneer Valley. It was presented as coming from the city of Springfield.
Correct.
Okay, I was just trying to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
No worries. Thanks for the question. Um, I know it's six minutes to one. Um, I just want to make sure, give enough time for folks, anybody else who has questions. Um, so I think for, uh, our, and next steps is just continuing to work with Sequoia and the team in terms of, um, and the MBI in terms of the implementation piece. Uh, continue to keep this group updated. Um, also, if there's any other grant opportunities, Sequoia, um, will, will, will keep us updated, anything that we see. So Eric, Michael, and everybody else that, you know, Stephen, who always sends us emails and stuff of things that are popping up. Um, just keeping us updated on anything else you he, you read here, um, on any opportunities for further funding. Um, and then I will, on my end, uh, in, in regards to the, the fiber side, um, once we set up that meeting, uh, I think Counselor Malo Brown is the chair of the Maintenance Development. So once we set that up, I'll make sure that this, uh, group, uh, gets that so that way you guys can stay informed and updated on what's going on there in terms of going at speed or any other fiber, uh, companies, I guess, for lack of a better term, that are, that are looking at the city of Springfield.
Jose, could you just clarify, um, whether or not the working group that was created um, by the city council two years ago and then extended for another year? Do we officially still exist or are we a group of interested people that's continuing to talk?
So that's a great question. Um, I know when we re-upped for, for this year, I know Counselor Fenton kept it on, but it kept it on almost as like an advisory. Um, let me just pull it up here. I want to say he, he kind of kept it on as an advisory. Um, here it is. Yeah, so it's like still, you know, kind of functioning in terms of, from the advisory capacity. Um, so you know, for me, it's anybody who wants to continue to talk about this work and particularly, especially when there's information that we don't have. I mean, you know, we'll continue to meet and update folks on the work on the report. Because from what I was told, the report was kind of the main impetus from the working group. And then once the report was done, but I think as you saw on the, on the final report, you know, there was a suggestion of keeping this, you know, this committee going. Um, as long as folks want to be involved in it. I mean, I mean, there's still a lot of, you know, equity work that we need to do around, you know, internet broadband, fiber, um, accessibility, education. So as long as, you know, folks are willing to have it, um, you know, in my opinion, we'll keep it going.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, of, 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 less than a month ago, maybe about two or three months, uh, two, two or three weeks ago, the governor made funding available to the community colleges to, uh, to, to provide funding for the digital equity. Uh, is there any way that, uh, it, you know, maybe some outreach could be done to the governor's office to find out uh, if there's any way that the city can tapping to some of those resources that she may have available, e- even though I, I realize that the Trump administration is cutting back on a lot of stuff.
I can check into that. I can check into that.
I'd appreciate that because if, if, if there are ways for us to get to continue working and bring money in, you know, I'd really like us to, uh, to, to, to stay on that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. I agree.
I'll be happy to look. Uh, Eric, I was wondering if Sequoia is already on that. Are you already working on that?
Um, I was gonna say I can look into that. I didn't
Okay.
about that, um, but we can divide and conquer.
Yeah, and one of the things, one of the things I would say about that is that, um, I, I, I did read a little bit or heard a little bit about the community college piece. Um, I know from what I understood, I thought that was specific to like their student body. In terms of them getting grant work to, you know, help empower their student body. But one of the things, you know, so both Eric, Sequoia have mentioned that they're, you know, glad to look into it. But one of the things I want to make sure I, I highlight again is when we were doing the work on the Launchpad Grant. Um, one of the things that we looked at was who are all these entities in the city who are receiving any type of funding for anything that's related to digital equity? So I think to your point, Mr. Howard, is, is continuing to find out what people are doing, find ways to collaborate and, and make sure that we're, we're hitting all the areas and that there's no holes in, in terms of digital equity access, affordability, um, and the work that we're doing. So I think any collaboration that, you know, if stick got some money and they're willing to collaborate with us, hey, we'll, 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 we'll reach out to them. But there, I just want to reiterate, there's so many different entities that are getting monies. So sometimes it's just us, you know, and that was one of the things I think I mentioned to Eric is I need to know who's getting money. What are they doing with it? And how is it impacting and, and, you know, because one of the fears that I had is that there are a number of entities doing the same thing, right? Uh, kind of duplicative services. And so for me, you know, which is fine, if organization got their money, they apply for it, they do what, what they want. But for me, I was just trying to make sure that there were no gaps in terms of what was being done around digital equity in the city. So if certain organizations were working on education, like, you know, and that's a big deal, then we'll focus on that. But like, I wanted to make sure there weren't other areas that, that were being left out and just trying to connect the web of, of organizations that are doing this work.
Yeah, because I'd, I'd received a list of allocations to different, uh, cities. And I, I, I look for it i- if I, if I can still pull it up. But some, a, a nice piece that, a change was sent to a Springfield. And I believe, uh, it's Technology Park, who about two years ago, I've been, and maybe Eric could, uh, could confirm or deny this, but, uh, Technology Park to my and, you know, okay, so how will that utilize, uh, people? In that, that way, the collaboration between city and technology park, figure out how we can develop and from that as a
You're breaking up, Stephen, on my end. I don't know if it's happening for anybody else.
Hard to hear you.
Okay. Yeah, no. So I heard you mention Technology Park and receiving grant funding and if Eric or, or team could look into that. And I, and again, to reiterate, like the collaboration piece, um, I think is key. And again, with the Launchpad Grant, that's what we tried to do. Uh, but when we reached out to Wayfinders, we reached out to Tech Foundry. I think we also reached out to the Urban League, right? So we reached out to different organizations, the libraries that are doing this work and trying to make sure that we support each other as a city. Um, so that, you know, so anybody again, you know, we're, we'll reach out and try to figure out what they're doing and what, what parts are they hitting.
Let you reach out to the, um, the public school. Because a lot of the equipment that they got during COVID is aging out or whatever the correct phrase is. So they may be facing some challenges going forward that the, you know, the tablets and whatever they had may not be in very good condition anymore. I don't, you know, I don't know, but that might be an area where there can be some assistance.
And I believe Sequoia was already working on that before, uh, Sequoia was, uh, checking in with them. And we were having conversations, I think at one point with the superintendent as well, um, on some of this work. So, but no, I, great flag.
My final comment, Mr. Chair, I find it ironic that we're talking about broadband. And while I'm talking, I'm breaking up.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking the same thing when you were talking, when Charlie was talking, right? Um, and just, it just goes to show that, you know, you know, you might have the infrastructure, but might not be perfect. Or you might have, you know, there's different ways of accessing it. So it's, it's never gonna be perfect, I think. But, you know, hoping to move in the right direction, so. All right, with that, I know we're past one o'clock, but I want to thank everybody for jumping in this meeting. Thank you to Sequoia and Eric and Michael and everybody else that, that, you know, uh, presented, uh, today. And so, um, again, we'll keep you guys updated with future updates, anything that's going on.